Anyway, seven o'clock. Is there anything of urgent good out to the agenda?
No, sir, nothing.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Yep, you're right. Eric voted in favor. And Eric is visiting us. So, counts payable for information. Very. Any questions or concerns? Shawna?
Um, Corey, you'll probably be able to answer this. Uh, that's in fact a back contract services to the tune of four thousand five hundred. Is that like a one call out?
Yeah.
Or was that multiple?
That would be all, uh, be all serious.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, it's multiple.
Multiple, okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, item number two, delegation. We have Mr. Tim Roberts. He has a request to purchase a loft application through the property of fifteen Riverview Drive, Southeast.
Yeah, you join.
Over to sit, stand.
Options are yours.
End endless.
End endless.
You got less.
So pretty much sums it up. We've had, uh, Jason.
What's your plan?
Uh, from the front of the house board, that's gonna cut up that asphalt there and the old wooden post that I cemented in and grass it all. And then just put a gate across and then rebuild the fence on number seventeen house there. It's all fallen in for a couple of years now, about probably about three years ago. And, uh, it's sad contention for the neighborhood of these walking past and these fences, even though just call and do your due diligence, you'll find out that you can do your pad or you can do your fence and rebuild it. This one here doesn't get used at all, the one across the street that's used for the golf course. I put a camera up there for a little over thirteen months now, it hasn't been used at all. Except for this last year, we finally got snow clearing there. Um, it was a mud with five. Kind of a sad state. Is a pair, so I figured I'd just fix it up, put a fence right across the, doing my own thing.
Anybody else have any question?
I'm too.
Yes, sir.
It's part of the, uh, town design to provide, uh, for, time limit for a shortcut. You know, to both the areas or if, if we just that one out, that would be a whole field.
You betcha. The one right behind me there between twenty-seven and twenty-five, there's a steel pole straight at the end right there, yeah, you betcha. And what that one's used for is, uh, they built snow up on that and he loads his snowmobiles in the back of his pickup for the last five years on the tour. So they don't even use that one over there. I'm not sure whichever one runs the snowmobile, there's snowmobiles all over the place, the one across the street is along the side of eleven. I'm not sure which one it is. Just that they loaded it up twenty-five or twenty-seven, or it could be someone else in the fourth.
Okay.
A hundred percent. Yeah, no, it's somebody from the fourth. Uh, they just load up, it's pretty genius actually to build a little snow round right up to the metal floor that that one loaded right to the back of the truck in two seconds.
Any other questions? Sell it out there?
Um, we believe there might be some utilities underneath of there. It might be a registered road right of way that would require cancellation by the office before we could do that, but as administration, we certainly look into the detail for some of the talk to which. Uh, just some research time to start with and report back to council.
No recommended motion here. So, somebody just want to move, we received the delegation from Mr. Robert Roberts, or anything? No correction, move in. Okay. So, move, receive for information, Larry. Any question or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried.
Can we go for now?
You're good to go for now.
Thanks, guys, something you, I guess we, we, well, right, yeah? I'm good to go, though, I can, on anything else, people? Alright, so thank you.
Minutes, we have in the council meeting, no, part twenty-second. Any questions or concerns about those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Then we move on to the district recreation committee meeting, no, half twenty-twenty-one. For information. Chris? Any questions or concerns? Hold any of that? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Then we move on to bylaws. First bylaw is bylaw nineteen twenty-two slash twenty-twenty-one being a bylaw to amend by law nineteen forty-four slash twenty-twenty, being the river valley waterable water distribution of fire hydrants, local improvement by law. It's here for the pre-read.
Yeah, first reading.
Crafty. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried.
I'm ready to plug second meeting.
On two. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried.
I'll present.
Present. Presentation for third.
Eric tried to mean. Sorry, Eric. That's okay. Okay, do you want to move, we present third, it must be unanimous, see? All in favor? That is carried unanimously. Somebody like, who, who, or Eric? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, so the next bylaw is bylaw nineteen twenty-three slash twenty-twenty-one, being a bylaw to amend by law sixteen ninety-eight slash twenty-eleven, being a land use bylaw. Allow C can to P one. Chris?
I will make the motion.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
This is where, where they asked discretionary.
They're making C cans discretionary. So it's the last two events.
Yeah, I think so.
And then, at them is already an application. But then that does not.
It'll go be advertised for all of caring. And then I'll go back there. And then it's already reviewed and passed on.
So this goes out a month from now. Okay, so? Any more questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Next, requests for decisions. We have the twenty-twenty-one municipal election returning officer appointment. Consideration, Shawna?
I know, we thought she asked why.
Right. Anybody have any question or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then, again, with the twenty-twenty-one municipal election, remuneration for the workers.
I'll move for option number one. I'll break over.
Any questions or concerns?
Did we also need a motion for the, uh, substitute returning officer?
Well, the recommendation was to appoint her and then Gillis was. Yes?
Yes, there is.
It's not truly in that motion that way. So there should be two motions?
There should be two motions.
Okay, we can go back to that after. So, dealing with option one, non-remuneration. Any questions or concerns about that one? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried, okay, we go back and appointment of the deputy returning officer?
It's a sub.
Substitute, three.
I'll make that motion.
Any questions or concerns about that one? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then item C, the temporary patio request for consideration. Go sit over there. Give me my steel or give me the here. The office, okay. Excuse yourself.
I will excuse myself for, thank you, Gary. And I will. I'll just stand back and chat here. Um, so what I'm asking for is to just basically get permission to put a very temporary patio on Third Street using an apartment stalls, um, very similar to what Madison hat currently does with a local, um, coffee station house and also with the mess. Their patios are much more permanent and what I'm going to do is extensions, uh, chain in between them just to uh, fence off license establishment from unlicensed establishment, and that does fall within, uh, PGLC's guidelines. Uh, they also have to approve it. Um, and it's also not, uh, out of the ordinary, like I mentioned, Madison hat does it. Brooks also has a program where they have the same patios, very similar patios to what Madison hat has downtown, where the city itself owns it and the restaurant or bar can rent it seasonally for five hundred dollars a year. The city then comes and assembles it and takes it down in years of. Um, so what I'm asking for is a bit unusual for us, but there is a precedent there for, for similar programs. And that's my own wish to it.
Um, so with the local, when they put up their patio, they have a sort of a walk-in area in amongst the patio that pedestrians can, is that kind of your idea, is you can have a walk-in area so that pedestrians have a little?
No, honestly not, um, I meant to mention sidewalk issue, that's a glaring thing, obviously. Um, my argument to that would be, there's a sidewalk that's right on the other side of the street where it's local, it's not as accessible as, uh, as my sidewalk is. Um, so I was probably not going to be doing that, it doesn't make sense to do that.
So, you do have a bit of a gravel parking area there. Would that not be a fair spot being safety close to the road and parking?
Um, it's, safety I don't think is an issue, uh, I was sitting at the stop sign just the other day, looking, and it's extremely visible of what I'm going to have, uh, of where it's going to be. So, if you were parked there, would you be worried about people coming around the corner hitting you? I don't think you would be. It's, twenty-five years I've been there, I don't think it's ever happened. Um, as far as in the back, that is certainly a possibility and I have asked for a permit, uh, with Brian on that as well, in case this goes sideways. Um, I can put about four tables there. Not really enough, uh, and then I'd also have to move my, uh, garbage cap onto a different parcel of land so that maybe the garbage truck can come in then. Um, and if I do it on the street, I probably could load seven tables. So load twice as much, making it more feasible. It's just my best way of making, hey, while the sun shines, so to speak. And it'll be very weather permitted, of course.
Is it hard to buy insurance for someone?
Um, our insurance would have covered proof of it involved. Of course. If they say no, don't do it, then I don't do it.
You'd be liable for anything more happening.
Of course, yeah. So this is just merely the first step, there's, uh, several steps after this. Uh, if I do end up doing insurance payment, if you'll see, shouldn't be an issue there, rubber stamping anything, keep it open.
And this would be temporary, assuming this is a rental property, you can use the bar.
Of course, that's ideal. I don't wanna be out on the streets. Uh, they, like today, we probably wouldn't have been open, eighty-eight degrees, whereas we could be open inside, drove around town. Um, so one patio with one person on it today. Weather permitted and very temporary, how long will that be, I don't know.
If it's not used, it, it comes down as a.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. It's just, uh, posts with the, a lot of reservoir in the bottom for wind. And so they don't blow away, and hotels will move indoors every night, but for you.
So after hours, it'll be all on?
That's right. Or at least put on my property, the tables probably, put on the property. Rather than out on the street. Depending on which tables. And that's another thing, if Brooks did actually involve a five hundred dollar rental, it comes with the patio that they struck and destruck, and also tablett, these supply new tables as well. I know it's an unusual request, unusual type.
Anybody have any more questions? If we have no more questions, Chris, then I guess I'd ask you to leave the room.
Sound it.
While we talk a little. Close the down door. Oh, but, but he's got out there. There's nobody over there.
Normally going to the office.
Okay.
I don't like it. I think opening ourselves up to one hell of a liability. The ones in Madison hat have a, a four block built. This is just awful. Well, I'm pretty good, not many one.
Well, just.
Yes, oh, cause there's one.
Not a quarter, I don't.
Yeah, there's, there's one, local, he's one at the mess, there's one at the coffee place.
Yeah, there's a little, there's a coffee station.
Yeah.
And then.
But there's lots of areas. Lots of areas of parallel parking, so you might pick up two parking stalls. This will take up a half a dozen. And that's already getting carried here and I, I don't like the idea of closing the sidewalk. Building something, go around it, maybe, close it.
When he's, he's got the opportunity to put it in the back, like John said, I think that's what you.
Because if somebody, some idiot came around the corner and whacked into somebody, sitting in the middle of the street, yes, we always the property, you're sitting on.
Well, I, I see that more with this, I'm also, I'm also certain. I haven't had any negative feedback of, or I certainly see the, I will be issued, and that's why I asked him for insurance, something that isn't behind people's place.
Now.
But, in the situation.
Don't even put one in the back then, it's one, four tables, it's a three. But at least it's a lot easier on our liability policy. Like if you were gonna build something, like they have downtown Madison hat, maybe, just temporary stakes and chains.
So I hear you.
Well, I guess I, I hear right now most quickly, if it's not in favor, I'm prepared to carry it. But I think that we, I think we share too, because, like, not made because it can also, like, SDAB or MPC, I guess we could set conditions, let it not be what it was in change. Let it be some ticket fence that.
We could, if we send this back to MPC to come back for education. I would think this is, this is an interesting issue.
He's just putting a request here, we're, obviously, it's, it's our road. MPC can tell us, we love our road.
Yeah, well, scientists, our road and our sidewalk.
And MPC has no jurisdiction because they have to review my.
Well, do we have to get the, uh, get up a full closure, uh, thing?
Well, I don't see that on the other patios that take up the sidewalk, you know, like, when you drive by the station or the logo, no.
Yeah, but they.
You have pens out there, that's it.
But they build the. Maybe they're off.
No, it is, it's a protected walkway around it, yes, I, I've seen it, it's been there for years, I understand what you're saying. But I mean, that, that could be a condition too. I talked to him, looked back there. I, but I'm not, I'm not an expert upon, uh, PGLC rules. He says he could want to get four tables back there. See where, two people are sitting at each table, they're not supposed to be single. Or the fourth. Yeah, I, I.
Please don't.
And I look at it, we let him go, bakery's been announced too. And then, I don't know where the heck you park it, you actually think you wanna go to either one of those places? Or what the heck, try to go to the.
Yeah, or those, where that tattoo parlor, or that ladies' laundry, it's like that's all places.
That is the worst area in town for parking, that's all we've been in issue. It's only on street, no, you know, on street. Except us, we have a pool, not one.
And we would lose. Lose the part, part.
All, all this bakery, somebody else.
Yeah, and we would lose part of the street. She's got a picture on it.
Well, I think that's just the party.
Eight parking stalls, eight.
Yeah, eight stalls.
Yeah, he would, I don't think his bottom line is truly going out that far, I think he'd be, I think he'd be taking up the parking area further out than here. To the alley. But I think that's his intent of that bottom line, is to consume the parking.
Is his intention to shut down the alley as well?
No. No, because that's where his garbage gets picked up. And I even thought of that, like, I would rather close that half alley and let him go in the backyard than close the street. Cause there is a T alley in behind the bakery, and I think even our garbage truck, you make that left-hand turn or right-hand turn, depending which way he comes and goes. Delivering people do like to go in that way, but then they go, and the pizza place won't have to. Like I say, I, I do have reservations too, it's not, it's not an ideal world. But right now, we're putting also play in on, uh, sympathy. And how do I stay in business? And, yes, it's hard.
I think I'd be more apt to having the alleyway closed than having those eight parking stalls taken out.
I, yeah, I agree there.
So if we want to then to work with him to see if that's feasible or not to he'd have to move his garbage table. Verity that alley, I don't know what or who if that causes complaints, but then we're still dealing with, but this bakery, this, I'm sure. I do, they have walk.
Yeah, people walk in. You can't go in and pick the bucket or walk away.
Another draft.
So known to what, the town of Sundry actually has gone and they've prepared a permit application and a site plan for each of their restaurants. Is what the town of Sundry has done, and Drayton Valley has also done something, so it's something maybe we can do is look at our restaurants and see if we can offer something for you guys.
Well, it.
That might be a good idea.
Yeah, don's across the way, has space, he's laughing.
Yeah, split that parking lot.
Yeah.
Although we.
Well, him even has space, and he just.
He built that front, yeah.
He had a patio there, one night in front.
They're old.
Yeah. But still, it is tough, and I don't even know what everybody wants to. Because right now, it's still.
Uh, Darren did get a call from Legion today as well.
They have a great big parking lot too, though, so they're, they got it easy.
Yeah, and Hilton is already been advertised.
They have a value, though, they have it super easy. Yes, it, it's hard to accommodate everybody, I guess, but how hard do we wanna go to accommodate it, I think that's the big thing.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion then, that the providing for the permit, hope the following conditions being that it is in his parking lot and that we look into possible extending it to the alleyway.
So, no use of street, even if he does build a walk-in, that? Well, that's, that's clear, it gives it in something to work with, but cause I do, I, I don't know what everybody's, this definitely become popular. I'm gonna, he's just gonna stop the spread, now with all the city people outside, it's still spinning.
I'm never eating with you again, Dwight.
Oh. And, and, and I'm, okay. More to me. Yeah, it, it's, it's tough. Okay, so Shawna made a motion.
Should we clarify that motion that we're going to require a, uh, closure of valley?
That we offer him, that we could close the alleyway rather than lose parking space closer. And see if that gets him up to, like, he's had four, he can get six, well, then, that's almost as good as he thought he could get on the street. Yeah, I'd be on the street. So everybody, it's kind of clear?
Yeah.
It's just, I think it's just have a man work with. Okay, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. I gotta ask my seven parking lot handler. It'll be dealt later. So we're moving on to the Garden Memorial, United Church, plus in the butt.
I'll go with just the motion number one, that you can give the question for temporary location.
But any questions or concerns about that?
I can get, like, my disturbing.
We've done it every year for how long?
Yeah, last year they didn't do it, and I don't know what is gonna be like.
Maybe you're main.
I didn't see any mention of, uh.
I didn't see any mention of, uh, COVID.
Yeah, he's got it in there.
What was it in there?
Yeah, he says that last year they didn't do it, and this year, if they do do it, they will practice for college spacing, and we allow so many people at time. They almost said it would be like a dry fight. So I remember that, we just get a garden opening, spray a whole pool of water.
What, what they could do is, what they talked about was of having can group up the more than ten, um, doing the blessings from the day would be.
That would group, yeah, I know he just mentioned.
That, that.
I remember why I didn't read.
That's what they talked about.
Okay. So everybody's clear on the motion? All in favor? Opposed, that it's carried. And then we move on to policies, first one being policy nineteen, bank transfers, checking, what, transfer signing story.
Any motion, uh, approved as presented?
Does anybody have any question or concerns? Go ahead, Sean.
Well, I have concerns that two staff members would have a sort of deciding, about the mayor, held up to me, so that the mayor. Passed the sign.
So that would mean, it's just not being.
Exactly.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything?
Just wondering what the intent was for this? To, to, um, have the mayor not sign, or having two people other than the mayor, I'm just wondering what the intent was?
Uh, the intent was just to streamline, uh, the process, I guess, um, sometimes we've got big, big payments that need to leave, and it just. Not calling the mayor in to sign a check, essentially what it is.
We certainly notify council anytime there was one that big.
And, and you are notified through the AP list of, of all payments that leave anyway. Um, and with the two people signing, we're still ensuring that everything we're doing is within budget, that's gonna affect council.
I have one question, how many, uh, electronic transfers do you do?
Uh, we've shifted, so we're doing more of those than we are chaps.
We see them.
Yeah, I know, but I don't like them at all. After, uh, the episode we had a couple of years ago, not here, but. On the report.
Well, I guess, because I'm an instructionalist. I, uh, looked at this, and I had concerns myself, and I guess. For thirty-one and a half years, it's the only way I've known it, and I don't know why it was ever set up that way. But it was always that way, I saw many, many William D. Duncan checks signed, and I saw Rob Gisler, and I saw Dee Rymer, and then I've even seen a few of my own. And no, I don't actually even sign a lot of them, and when it comes to hundred thousand dollar ones, used to be, I was called in when we had to do a police quarterly check, because that's a couple hundred thousand. And then the odd time, there would be a progress payment, maybe to a construction site that, because they're billing us monthly, might make it more than a hundred grand, but. I honestly have to say that I don't think in the three years I've been mayor, I've ever signed more than half a dozen in a year. And, uh, if I slowed you down, I'm terribly sorry for that, but, what I did do is I phoned everybody, because I had nothing else to do. And, uh, I found out that we're the slackest bunch in the drawer. Cypress County, literally, Dan goes in at three, and sits down, and verifies and signs each individual check. And it's sitting there with the bill in her hand, and he says sometimes, do you even ask why? And that's a little maybe stepping a little further, like if it's within budget, you guys have the authority to do it. I phoned Steve Wiggerneck at County Forty Mile, he personally signs each and every check. I phoned Gordon Reynolds at Paul Allen, he personally signs each and every check. And then I phoned all the way to Tabor, and they personally sign each and every check, so nobody uses electronic except the city. Ted's signature is electronic on all of them. And I'm going, all right. So why are we changing a system that seems to work in the whole of our neighborhood separately? Because honestly, if I live ten blocks away, and any mayor could not live more than fifteen blocks away. If you needed a check signed, and it was even a hurry, it would hurt.
Mayor isn't around.
And then the deputy mayor, and we all are signed on, because we rotate through deputy mayor, and it says even there, if deputy isn't around, you grab the next guy.
Yeah.
And so on and so on, and every one of them have one council, board creed, and CFO or CAO, they. So the way our policy used to read before the changes was exactly how everybody does it in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So I personally, I guess I would ask that we repeat the motion, and we think the way you were. I'm glad some other people asked some of those questions. It is, in one way, it used to be a check and balance thing, and I realize that by me not actually looking at all the bills, and verifying the checks, then I'm truly not verified. But we are. The people that control the money, it's our job to set the budget, and it's our job to make sure that the budget is followed. And that should even mean that we see orderly financial statements that prove that we are on track with our budget, which guilty, I haven't seen one now in probably six or seven months. Just saying.
I would agree with you on that one, Dwight.
Yeah, and I was, I was talking about until just recently here, about that, the extra check and balances is kind of nice, because it's kind of a thing right now, people read it in the media. Unrelated topic, this wouldn't have caught it, but, um, several staff were fired, and then one particular staff had a whole bunch of overtime, two hundred, one hundred thousand dollars, and decided off all. Trying to find out who did that. More checks and balances is to keep people. People in line.
Yeah.
Not bad, man.
Yep, yep, uh, does anybody else have anything we wish to say? So I will call for the question, all in favor? Opposed? Just to be there. So then we move on to policy number ninety-three, being the safety policy. Got it?
Just thinking that, policy nineteen, although the language still needs to be changed with the position changes. Where we have.
Oh, because they did call Mike a different name?
Yes.
Yeah. Why'd you guys be chasing?
We didn't call Mike a different name.
Well, I thought it was, but he crossed out director of finance, and it's him, because now he's corporate services director.
Yeah, they did that last May. That's not new. No.
So the position is still, that is the accurate position of corporate services director?
Yes.
So, got it, you corrected me again, and you're right. I guess what we should do is amend the policy to reflect accurate names.
I will make.
So the three positions would be corporate services director, municipal manager, and mayor.
I would make that motion, Dwight.
Yeah, so both will be the only changes, would be just the name change, still requires one from each side of the fence. Okay, all right, thank you, Eric. Any questions or concerns about that? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, now we can move to policy ninety-three, being the safety policy. Chris, motion number one? Okay. Anybody have any questions or concerns? None, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Policy number one thirty-two, service drainage and property for consideration.
Uh, motion, uh, option number one, approved as presented.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? None? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, carried. Then we move on to policy one thirty-three, meaning being grading information to be provided for, for applications. Jim? Any questions or concerns about that one? And, go ahead.
That, you almost didn't have to have, uh. A storm, storm bridge.
I think in commercial, you're required.
Oh, that's the first.
Yes, not so much in residential, you're sticking with grading information, like they're pre, they're predetermined finish grades.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you, in commercial, you have to put aside grading plan by. So, when you mentioned county engineer, that would be a contracted engineer?
Correct.
All right. Any other person? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Moving on to correspondence. We have the city of Medicine Hat recognizing the national free digital hotline, Sean?
I'll move for information.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Then our CDP detachment, municipal policing report.
Receive information.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns about, uh, John Junior? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then the Paliser Airshed Society Station Summer Report for information, information. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then APWA being the National Public Works Week, May sixteenth to twenty-second. Motion required, either consideration or information.
Information.
Information? Any questions or concerns about that? All in favor? Carried, or sorry, opposed, carried. All right, so then we have the AUMA twenty twenty-one Public Risk Conference for information.
Okay, fair.
All any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Then we move on to other detailed design, Second Street, tender. I guess?
Yeah.
Okay, because it's under budget, you just, you do the approval, we just receive it there. A lot of the budget.
A lot of the budget.
That's a lot of the budget. There's a lot under everybody else.
Yeah.
Well, that's. Okay, any question? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then ball diamond number three, re- validation project board for information. Got it? Any questions or concerns? How hard would it be to put it back? Because we've had that one big diamond forever, and I know it doesn't be used if you play a golf.
Right. I mean, it, it wouldn't be hard to put it back, there would be costs associated to it.
Right, but they're moving tents, they're changing infield, and the bases are shorter, but, yeah. Go ahead.
Just for information, on the other side of it, after the fence is moved, is where the new tenting areas.
And then changing.
Come on at night?
There's some modifications.
And changing it back.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so how, is it still gonna be, is it gonna be just for Little League, or can slow pitch still use it? Because I know slow pitch was the only one that has used it over the past twenty years, and it's for slow pitch premium. We did use that one.
It, I, I'm not certain of all the dimensions of all the different leagues, so I think, I can't say that I know that slow pitch can use it, but I know that it can be used by multiple leagues, it doesn't have to be just.
Giving that idea, uh, two and four are fine for slow pitch. Number one is not.
I, I, I said, it doesn't help me, I still don't know the dimensions, so. I can find out for you, but I, I don't know.
Okay. Well, I, let's, I'm, I might ask for a question, is it gonna go to down in one size? The infield is too small for slow pitch.
Yes. We're, we're currently not overbooked with.
No, you have to go, at least, uh, twenty, forty-six teams, use all three guys.
But there would still be two and four, even if this one got down to one.
Yeah. Yeah, still be two and four.
Be two of each size.
Yes, it would probably accommodate. And diamond three is at least, for a president.
Right, because it's too big.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we could probably still accommodate eighteen team league, which is far more than a tower.
So it is here for approval, for, for information, because. So any other questions or concerns? All in favor of receiving your information? Opposed, that is carried. And twenty twenty-one kitchen spring cleanup, for information. Sean? And it's a Thursday, Friday. Clean up. Free individually wrapped, two mortars.
The text messages going up to eighty-four, so.
Tell, tell them I think.
Ryan, Ryan, sorry.
Ryan.
Shouldn't be ready.
Ryan, we're going for.
What, shouldn't it be ready for bakery doors? Because they sponsor it.
Yeah, they sponsor it.
And she just said they're working on the garden bag.
Because the biggest mess is theirs anyway.
I was like, yes, you're right. You just said that. Okay, I mean, in photon, right, Sean made the motion. All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And Epsia says funding information update, so, where are we spending the money? We're gonna give Team Tendermore, where do we pick up something else? But that, this is just for information now. I don't know. When we were looking at, figuring out. Because they were good for this year, but they didn't.
Yeah.
So, a lot of information, but I'd also like to know where we could. Is, is it going to be a budget item that we increase? For next year, like, obviously, we'll, we'll need to find them more funded.
The last meeting, I already told them not to expect anything until budget, can we actually do our budget because we can't just pull money or another program. You're gonna have to wait until the budget.
Oh, yeah, you have right now, what do you mean in the next year?
Yeah, but the next budget.
Oh, easy there.
No. No, and only twenty percent of this, well, actually I think the town is putting in more than twenty percent right now, but it used to be an eighty, twenty split. So this is not all our money, but I don't know what I feel. Go ahead.
So according to the numbers that were presented here, they never go over budget. So is there room to give them maybe even two thousand dollars in one issue?
They don't need it.
Yeah, he said the bay of that hundred and thirty sitting in service right now, but they just said that's going to disappear fast and then, and then they don't have steady committed funding. They're paying. Well, for sure they would, because they, they surplus it then. They would just end up taking, spreading it out for four years. I know Med, I don't think Madison had funds the families' liaison. Which we do. Right. I think seventy-six has to find that funding all on their own. Or it's very gross. We, that started out being a full-time person, of course, it probably isn't anymore. We've given the same since, since its inception and we're getting probably double, but that is the place that truly we're unique in funding. Um, and even the one above it, we're fairly unique in funding that too.
What is our ones?
The, the.
Okay, that's.
And then this is, that's not, I'm sure, this is very rural school district, families support it.
Right.
And these, like I said, I'm pretty sure that's not, um, so he said, so then we said same as the Catholic, if the Catholic funds, they're. So, you know, that is a place where if we wanted to say our youth are more important here than there, because this is for youth too. That is the place. And then, then there is the other one, because I know that's not, that's service repeats with, um, Alberta Health in offering, we'd say, type of programs. So, and everybody can go to Alberta Health Services, like Alberta Health. It's just a waiting list. But again, those are, those are things that could be, but it's not like we have huge money to, that we can just shuffle. You know, you're gonna have to pull from one, you're gonna put some on the wrong. Certain is something that needs to be considered, we're about to get. But anyway, it is just.
For information.
All right, any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Municipal management report to council for information. Carry. Any questions or concerns, any items there?
Is there anything that you want to go for?
No, not at this time, because the staff covered it very well. Thank you.
Any questions, anybody have? None, all in favor, receiving information? Opposed? Carry. Then land over apps. Twenty twenty-one versus five year average and five. Currently. Carry. Any questions or concerns? Well, that was actually over. You, there was some struggling about slopes in the one bit. That just tried to fill it. You just can't get in that one area or what? If you were just at your cell, so it was trying to get the trucks to do that first turn, first to paint above. Uh, we've got, we've found that two less, we've actually spread out those three less slopes. So now bigger trucks, compared. Now we've gone about twenty meters, just let them do anything in that. Okay. It's not an issue. Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Council work meeting events.
Information.
All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Does anybody need a recess to do long? No, okay. Then we.
Yeah.